The meeting is being recorded and livestreamed at lakecountyil.gov/WatchZBA. Remote attendance has been made available to the public via Zoom, as well as on the second floor conference room with the Lake County Permit Facility at 500 West Winchester Road at Libertyville. It's limited to the number of persons practicable in keeping with social distancing requirements. As a reminder to the board members, please ensure your camera is on if you are speaking at any time. Also remember to mute yourself. If you are calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. At this time, Brad, if you would do a roll call, please.
Member Hockney. Did you see a member Hockney is present?
I do see him.
Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Raymond? Member Raymond? I see on the screen.
I can see Marv. Marv, can you hear us?
You might want to confirm that both Member Hockney and Raymond can hear you. It seems like they're not interacting with the ZBA.
I think Member Hockney is connecting to audio right now. He's like, Brad, pick on the screen.
Yes, it looks like it.
Give him a second there.
Member Raymond, can you hear us?
May not have connected to audio. Somebody from staff maybe wants to give him a call on his cell and see if we can get him to connect to audio. That'd be appreciated. Denny, can you hear us?
I hear you.
Thanks, Denny. Brad, if you want to continue with the rest of the roll while we wait to get Marv back.
Sure. Member Rindell?
John, we can see, I think you want to hit the spacebar to unmute yourself because we can't hear you. I think staff's going to help John there.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you, John. We've got you present.
Thank you.
Member Roche?
Here.
Member Starkey?
Here.
Chair Kepin?
Here.
Have visually seven members present.
Great. And it looks like Marv is going to try and connect. So while we're there.
I'm sorry, I had my thing turned down because my tenant just called me and.
Great. No worries. No worries. We've got you here in present, Marv. Thanks. With that, we do have a quorum. Member Peterson, if you would lead us in the pledge once they put the flag up on the screen, that would be appreciated.
Nope.
I think Krista was, there we go.
There we go. Okay, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Member Peterson. Appreciate it. Are there any additions to the agenda or deferred matters to discuss?
There are no deferred matters, but we'll be adding an item for public comment items that are on the agenda.
Okay, sounds good. Before I go any further, for those that were not at the past hearing, since we did continue, if you are going to make any comments, if you would raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Shake your head or respond verbally, yes. Thank you. We are back together today to look at the text amendments for cannabis regulation in the Tax Act here in Illinois, in Lake County. As a recall, back on January in 2020, Illinois cannabis in the Tax Act allowed for the establishment of adult use cannabis businesses and the sale and consumption of adult use cannabis here in Illinois. That act also allowed for reasonable zoning regulations. At that time, the county board put a moratorium on that in Lake County. On February 9th of this year, the county board did direct the ZBA to conduct public hearings, which we did on Monday night, and we're doing again today to get input on the text draft amendments that we have here before us. We're happy that we do have several folks here. I believe we have 16 to 8 trillion of us today that are with us today that may want to make comments. Staff, once they make their presentation, some of those comments may be addressed. If they are not, we would love to hear from you. You're glad you're with us. I also want to recognize those county board members that took the time out of their schedule to be with us both Monday night and again today. We appreciate your interest in this and appreciate you being with us as well. Also want to put a thank you out again to staff for all the work they did on this and our communications department on the website to get those input and comments before and allowing for the Zoom meeting today. Staff is going to present. Then we will have the ZBA board members ask any questions that they might have of staff. It'll be a slightly condensed presentation, I believe, over what we have Monday night. That is available. Folks can watch that if they want, but staff will make a presentation. The board will ask any questions at that time that they have. We will then open it up to public comment. And again, it's comment only, so staff and the ZBA will not be taking, answering questions at that time, but you are welcome to put comments in and we will recognize you at that time. Also, any comments that we received prior to 10:00 AM today were submitted to all the zoning board members. Every zoning board member has had an opportunity to review those. Once we get to comment sections, I will read off a couple that were submitted in writing to make sure you know that we did see those. We appreciate those as well. And at this time, I am going to turn it over to staff, I believe, for Brad to, I think, actually Brad's going to make the opening remarks, I believe.
Good afternoon. ZBA case triple zero six three two twenty twenty one. It's on certain proposed amendments to chapter 151, the Lake County Illinois Code of Ordinance relating to the regulation, adult use cannabis businesses. The legal notes for the hearing was published in the Daily Herald on April 2nd, 2021. Eric Wagner will be presenting the case today.
Good afternoon, Eric Wagner, Planning, Building and Development Director. I'm happy to join all of you for today's ZBA public hearing on proposed zoning regulations for adult use cannabis businesses in the unincorporated area. And as the chair mentioned briefly, this is a continuation of the hearing from Monday night, which was well attended and we had a lot of good discussion at that hearing. In order to orient new attendees who were not able to attend Monday night's hearing, staff will be repeating a lot of the same information, albeit in a condensed form. So for those of you who are attending for the second time, please bear with us as we walk through the material. I'll introduce staff involved in this afternoon's presentation in a couple of minutes, but first for the benefit of new members of the public that are joining us today, I'd like to provide a little bit of background to this hearing process. So as you all know, adult use cannabis is now legal in Illinois for purchase, possession and for use. And under the Cannabis Regulation Tax Act, we'll call it CTRA from here in, here on in in the presentation, which was passed in 2019, local governments have the authority to decide for themselves whether to legalize through zoning the businesses that grow and refine and transport and ultimately sell cannabis to legal adults, those adults that are 21 and over. This ZBA hearing is the first step in an extensive review process for Lake County to decide whether for the unincorporated area, which is the area outside of any villages or cities within the county, whether in the unincorporated area, adult use cannabis businesses should be zoned to operate in the future, subject to state licensing. And there's a licensing process that the state separately administers from the local zoning process. So let me repeat a very important nuance to what I just said. Each town, each village, each city and the county, independently, independently of each other, have authority over cannabis business zoning for their own territory within their own borders. So for us, for Lake County, this hearing process is addressing the potential to zone only in the unincorporated area outside of each city and village in our county area. And the county will not be deciding what happens in the villages, whether it's Antioch or Zion or Highland Park or Barrington or any village in between. We're simply looking at the unincorporated area. So, and a very important part of this process is the feedback that we hear from you, the public. This afternoon's hearing follows an extensive public outreach effort that staff from our department, along with Lake County Communications and our county board members have undertaken over the past several weeks. We've done a lot to get information out to our community, including a number of press releases over the past several weeks, several public meetings of the county board and its committees, social media posts. We've got a release of an adult use cannabis website and a public comment form. We've gotten a number of responses on that already. And multiple board member newsletters. If you've signed up for one of those newsletters, you would have gotten multiple notices about the hearing process. So you're likely here today because of at least one of these outreach efforts. We're really happy to collect your feedback at today's hearing because it will be considered both by the ZBA as it reviews the draft proposal and then later on by our Public Works Planning and Transportation Committee. And then finally, by the full board, as it makes a zoning decision for unincorporated adult use cannabis businesses. That said, a lot of prep work, prep work has gone into preparing us for today's hearing. Going back to when the CRTA law was first enacted and around that time in the summer and fall of 2019, Lake County created a countywide task force consisting of county and municipal governments to collectively study the potential impacts of recreational cannabis legalization and what kinds of regulatory strategies have been used in other states across the country that have previously legalized recreational cannabis. As far as we're aware, this Lake County task force was the only regional task force of local governments in the state to do this. And we've gotten some real value out of the exercise, most notably a set of, we'll call them best practice-based approaches to regulation from both ends of the spectrum, from on the one hand banning of cannabis businesses given jurisdiction and on the other side to allowing cannabis businesses subject to various restrictions. So once the task force back in 2019 completed its work, the final report of our task force was delivered to the county board in November of that year. And on a side note, staff will talk a little bit later about what happened in the other communities after each had the opportunity to deliberate on its own, on cannabis zoning policy. So when we provided the task force report to the board in late 2019, the board decided it needed some further time to consider all the implications of legalizing versus banning businesses in the unincorporated area. So based on that, the board instead delayed a decision on moving forward and enacted a one-year moratorium to give the board and staff time to look into the topic further, which we did. And by the time the moratorium was set to expire this past February, the board was ready to move forward with the zoning process to determine whether to legalize adult use cannabis businesses in the unincorporated area. And that's how we got to today's hearing. So now I'll proceed to the introductions. I'm joined today by a number of staff that are on the call and they're operating various elements in Zoom to help the meeting run smoothly. First, we have Krista Brown, the Planning and Zoning Manager, who will lead the staff presentation. We've got Brad Dence, who's the ZBA Secretary, who you heard from a little earlier, and he's going to carry out the procedural aspects or procedural functions for the hearing. Tom Shifalo is on the call. He's going to share our interactive mapping function with the public today. We've got Alex Carr from Communications on hand to help us with the Zoom function so that members of the public can speak during their opportunity for a public comment. And as Chair Kepin earlier noted, we do have a number of county board members present to listen in to the topic and hear what you have to say about adult use cannabis zoning. We can go to next slide, please. So to kick off the substantive part of the presentation, we'll walk through the various topics that you see on the screen here. Krista will first go through some background information on cannabis in the state, along with a brief highlight on how cannabis business zoning has been handled so far in our Lake County municipalities across the county. After that, she'll walk through some of the main policy considerations that are embedded in the text that the ZBA is going to be reviewing today. Krista will then summarize the process for reviewing the draft amendment. So you'll have a better idea or understanding of where we're at now and what steps remain before the county board's final decision later this year. And then she'll walk us through the draft regulations themselves. First, a high-level summary, and then she's going to go page by page through the document. So you can see for yourself how it's laid out. Before I hand the mic over to Krista, I'd like to extend a special thanks to our ZBA members who took the time to get read up on the topic and to convene this hearing this afternoon to be with you. And I'd also like to thank our county board members who are listening in today. And of course, I'd like to thank staff for putting all this together. Of course, we would really like to thank you, the public, for your participation. This is your hearing and we look forward to hearing what you have to say today. So with that said, I'll invite Krista to walk us through the formal presentation. Thank you.
Afternoon. Thanks, Eric. Krista Brown, Planning and Zoning Manager. So beginning with some background, as Eric mentioned, the CRTA was, went into effect beginning of January 2020, which permits the production, sale, possession and use of recreational or adult use cannabis and cannabis products. Throughout their discussion today, we'll be using those terms interchangeably, recreational or adult use. Obviously, you know, those that the production, sale, possession, use is subject to various limitations and restrictions, specifically limited to Illinois residents over the age of 21. Local governments, as Eric said, cannot prohibit the consumption or possession of cannabis within their jurisdiction, but they are allowed to either ban cannabis businesses entirely or enact reasonable zoning regulations that are related to time, place, manner and number of business operations. Governments can also establish minimum distances between dispensaries, as well as require a conditional use permit for cannabis facilities. The use of cannabis for medicinal purposes will continue under the Compassionate Use of Medical Cannabis Pilot Program Act that was passed in 2013. The CRTA does not significantly affect medical cannabis business operations or the availability, purchase and use of cannabis for qualified registered patients, nor does it restrict medical cannabis patients from purchasing adult use cannabis. The proposed amendments that are the topic of this hearing specifically today pertain to adult use cannabis facilities and would not affect the already in place standards within the Unified Development Ordinance for medical businesses. Since the passage of the Adult Use Act in 2019, staff has been monitoring the regulatory status of adult use cannabis businesses among municipalities within Lake County. As it currently stands, there are 26 municipalities that either allow or have approved adult use dispensaries. Those are shown in green and green striping on the map. There are 23 municipalities that have enacted bans, which are the solid red areas. And we have three jurisdictions that are currently under a moratorium, a temporary ban or similar action, including unincorporated Lake County, which is indicated with the red stripes. And finally, we have two villages that have unknown status and those areas are shown in yellow. Turning now to look at some important considerations, we'll start with economic impacts. It's safe to say that sales of cannabis in Illinois far exceeded everyone's initial expectations and projections. From the outset, sales of adult use cannabis were strong and have remained consistently strong to date. In 2020, sales of medical and adult use cannabis from the 80 dispensaries that were open by the end of December were over $1 billion. And across the state, sales from just the recreational cannabis alone accounted for $669 million. On average, approximately 25% of the adult use sales have been attributed to out-of-state customers. And for the first three months of this year, total sales have already reached almost $279 million. In October 2019, the board, Lake County Board, approved an ordinance adopting the cannabis retailer's occupation tax, which is a state authorized tax for adult use dispensary sales in municipalities, as well as a tax on any potential future unincorporated dispensary sales. We're not able to share any detailed information regarding the implications for local tax revenues. Since the release of that data is subject to some very specific disclosure rules. However, based on statewide sales growth projections for the cannabis industry in Illinois, we predict that the tax revenue collected from cannabis will be far greater than what the county is currently receiving from video gaming. And depending on how many dispensaries are ultimately open and in operation within the county in just a few short years, that those numbers may hit 3 million or more. In addition to dispensary sales and tax revenue, another key aspect to consider with the proposed amendments is related, that's related to the economics side of things, is the creation of new businesses. So dispensaries are only one part of the cannabis industry and there are five other types of facilities associated with the production and distribution of the product. Those businesses have been included in our proposed amendments. And with those businesses, there's potentials for job opportunities and commercial property tax revenue. One of the goals of the moratorium was to allow additional time to learn about community impacts of the CRTA. However, like so many other things, the COVID-19 pandemic drastically affected those plans. The disruption to social behaviors and to the medical community in particular made it extremely difficult to ascertain what effects legalization had or will have on the local level. That said, we did obtain some data from the Lake County Sheriff's Department for last year on cannabis-related possession offenses and with vehicular crash fatalities. While overall accident-related fatalities in the county were down last year, the number of fatal crashes involving cannabis use was up slightly. And the trend for possession-related offenses trended downward, but there were changes to the statute as well as behavioral changes that may have played a factor in that. Analysis of local health impacts was similarly hampered. It was, it was basically, we were unable to gather any meaningful hospital or urgent care data related to cannabis use because of the pandemic's effects on the healthcare system. The pandemic also disrupted efforts to research impacts to local youth. The 2020 Illinois Youth Survey, a primary data source related to substance use and abuse among teens, was completed by only half, about half of the students that took the survey in the previous cycle, which was in 2018. And that makes it difficult to draw any conclusions. While the 2020 data does appear to show a downward trend in cannabis use among students, without having that full population sample, it's difficult to determine whether that is truly indicative of trending, you know, use, trending uses of cannabis among students after like legalization. Past reviews of the Illinois Youth Survey do suggest that youth cannabis use in Lake County as a whole hasn't changed much over the last decade. But there have been specific areas of Lake County that have seen significant increases in youth use. Given those challenges assessing local impacts, we did look at other states where cannabis has been legalized. But after looking at research and studies that were done elsewhere, one thing that we found very clear was that there the unintended public safety effects of legalizing cannabis use can be really difficult to analyze. There's limited nationwide data available and state-level comparisons are problematic due to variances in collection and reporting of that data. Crime statistics may not often be representative of the true issues because there's no current technology that would be symbolizer to a breathalyzer that can economically and efficiently detect cannabis use in the field. And this presents real challenges with detecting DUIs that could be cannabis-related. Based on studies that have been conducted in those other states and in some anecdotal conversations that we've had with our local law enforcement partners, we can say with some certainty that our local law enforcement agencies are going to need some additional resources to address things like detection, sobriety testing and in conducting the routine inspections of cannabis facilities. We can also draw some general health-related conclusions from the national studies that have been conducted. Research suggests that cannabis may pose a greater risk to teenage brains than alcohol. Cannabis use among young people has been shown to have several negative effects that include impaired brain development, increased difficulties in staying focused, increased risks for addiction and other mental health issues, as well as causing hallucinations, delusions and/or paranoia. Other health considerations to consider, there are things that would impact any user of any age. One would be that THC, which is the psychoactive component in cannabis, is at least three times what it was over, you know, since 25 to 30 years ago. And this can lead to problems associated with improper dosing over consumption. Having high concentrations of THC in one system can significantly impair judgment and motor skills. And further, the inhalation of smoke can also increase the risk of developing lung problems. And as the case with law enforcement, our partners in public health are going to need additional resources as well so that they can do more things along, you know, youth prevention strategies and public health education campaigns. So as Eric mentioned, in 2019, we conducted a regional adult use cannabis task force. And throughout the latter part of 2019 and into 2020, we engaged with discussions with the county board on potential options for regulation in unincorporated areas. Following those discussions, we went into a one-year moratorium on all adult use cannabis businesses in unincorporated Lake County. And then in January of this year, in advance of the moratorium's expiration, the Public Works Planning and Transportation Committee recommended an initiation of the formal zoning process, excuse me, the formal process to consider zoning regulations to allow adult use cannabis businesses in the unincorporated areas, subject to restrictions. So as part of that process, Planning, Building and Development staff drafted a set of zoning amendments to the code that were based on the task force's model regulations and from other research. On February 9th, 2021, the board directed the Zoning Board of Appeals to hold public hearings, and that brings us to today. So after the conclusion of the hearing, these proceedings, the ZBA's recommendation will be sent to the Public Works Planning and Transportation Committee. That committee will review the proposed amendments and the ZBA recommendation, and they will make their own recommendation, which will then advance to the Lake County Board. And following that, the Lake County Board will conduct their own consideration of both recommendations and take final action. And we estimate that to occur sometime within the next month or two. So turning now to look at the proposed amendments. We have six types of businesses, as I mentioned, that are defined and authorized under the CRTA that we've included in the amendments, and those businesses operate across the spectrum in support of the industry. So each of the six businesses have a specific role and they're licensed by the state. So beginning with cultivation centers and craft growers, those entities are responsible for the growing production and packaging of the plants just at different scales. Craft growers are small-scale cultivation facilities and each craft grow facility initially under the statute is limited to 5,000 square feet of growing space, but would have the option to expand that footprint incrementally over time with their maximum space being capped at 14,000 square feet. We have processing centers that oversee the extraction of cannabis chemicals and compounds and formulation of extracts and concentrates. Infusers are those responsible for incorporated cannabis and cannabis concentrate into other products. Transporters are pretty much just the way it sounds. Those entities move the product from, from the production. Transporters are pretty much just the way it sounds, those entities move the product from from the production side to the dispensaries. And last, we have the dispensaries, which are the point of sale for the cannabis and cannabis products to the consumer. Dispensary licenses are under the purview of the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation. Whereas the Department of Illinois Department of Agriculture has oversight of the licensing of the other business types. So the Act set out specific numbers of licenses to be issued for each business. Like, you know, everything, as we've mentioned, COVID interrupted that that licensing rollout and we still don't have a date certain of when that. Program is going to resume. A key component of the state licensing process to keep in mind is that businesses would first be awarded what is known as a conditional. Adult use cannabis license. And then they are allowed a hundred and eighty days to find a suitable location and obtain the local zoning approval. So if it's if it's a CUP or a conditional use permit, they would have to go through that process and get that approval. And then, at which time they satisfy local zoning regulations, they would be awarded an actual adult use. License that would permit them to operate. So looking at the table that shows, this shows the proposed uses and specific zoning districts within that each business would be allowed to operate within. So as you can see, no facilities would be allowed to operate in any residential zoning district. And more specifically, all of the businesses would be limited to properties. Within three non-residential zoning districts. So the general commercial district, the limited industrial district and the intensive industrial district. So within the general commercial or GC zoning district, four of the six uses would be permitted only. With that approved delegated conditional use permit. As currently proposed, cultivation centers and transporters would not be allowed in GC. Because those facilities are typically larger in size and most likely suited to industrial district. Within the limited industrial and intensive industrial district, five uses would be permitted only with an approved delegated conditional use permit. The delegated conditional use permit is, that process is typically three to four months. And it requires a public hearing before the zoning board of appeals. Any adjacent and nearby property owners would be provided notice of the hearing and would be able to attend and provide comment. Finally, transporters, the last use there in green you see would be allowed by right. So those facilities are designed as a base of trucking operations that are strictly engaged in with the delivery, product delivery. There's no storage of any product onsite per the statute. And as such, we anticipate that those facilities would be no more impactful or use intensive than any other type of warehousing. And freight movement company, which are already permitted uses in the industrial districts. So the draft regulations have been structured into three sections, which group and regulate the business types by their function and use. We have dispensaries in the first group, the second group is comprised of the cultivation. And processing centers, infusers and craft growers, and we have transportation facilities in the third group. Within the draft standards for dispensaries, there are several key regulations that would apply and I will go into detail. In the next couple of slides, but in general, some key items to highlight. The first would be buffering from sensitive land uses. So the amendment sets specific minimum distances from sensitive uses, such as neighborhoods and schools. That dispensaries, as well as cultivation and processing facilities would have to meet. No drive through facilities or onsite consumption would be allowed at any retail business, including dispensaries and tobacco stores. And all uses would have to follow general development standards of the Lake County Code as well as those set forth in the Act. So looking at each of those three groups a bit closer, we'll start with dispensaries where adult use cannabis is sold to consumers. This business category is the most specifically regulated of any of the six business types. And that's because that's where the point of sale occurs when the product moves from the production side of the industry into the community. The first standard that dispensaries are subject to, as I mentioned, is that buffering from sensitive land uses. So the amendment sets specific minimum distances between cannabis dispensaries and identified sensitive uses. Such as residential areas and schools. As drafted, the amendment specified that dispensaries may not operate within two hundred and fifty feet of forest preserves or residentially zoned districts. Within five hundred feet of public care and educational facilities such as daycares and parks or within a thousand feet of schools. Additionally, each dispensary must be a minimum of fifteen hundred feet away from any other dispensary. I'm going to now turn it over to Tom Shafalo, Principal Planner on our staff, he's going to give us a brief demonstration. Of how the sensitive use buffering as drafted would affect the sighting of a dispensary in Illinois.
Good afternoon, this is Tom Shafalo. I'm going to provide you with a short some description of how to use the. Mapping application, the cannabis mapping application. So when you first open up the cannabis mapping application, you will see this disclaimer. And the reason the disclaimer was included in the at the opening of the application is because this. The data that we use in this application was created originally in twenty nineteen for the cannabis task force. And there are certain types of uses such as daycare which change monthly and so therefore. The data should not be used by anyone who would like to try to cite a facility. The second screen is some instructions that come up and it guides you through the use of the application and that's what I'm going to be doing today. So when you get the screen open, you'll see that there are two menu items. The menu item on the right, the query actually can be, you can close that because that was really a tool that was developed for the municipalities. To develop their own buffering. On the left hand side, you can see a. A search bar. And that you can use that search bar to search for a specific PIN. And a specific address or a road intersection and for our demonstration today, I'm going to. Look at the intersection of US Highway forty five and Gages Lake Road. So when you click on the search bar, it will bring you to the intersection. And I'm going to zoom out just a bit. The the menu items on the left hand side include municipal boundaries. And the Lake County boundaries plus a list of the buffers that we've already. Precand into the application, parcels of county board districts. And the zoning or the zoning districts for unincorporated Lake County and so I'm going to turn them on and again. This tool is just for determining the location of, potential location of. Dispensaries in unincorporated Lake County. And in unincorporated Lake County, the draft ordinance now only allows dispensaries in general commercial. And limited industrial and intensive industrial zoning districts, so you can see in this map area that I'm displaying right now. There actually is a zoning district called LC, which is limited commercial. And that is not where a dispensary could be located according to our draft ordinance, it would only be in this red, which is general commercial. Which is GC. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn off. The municipal boundaries just because we don't need them, we're just looking at unincorporated Lake County. And then I'm going to turn on the draft buffers that are included. In the draft ordinance, the draft buffer distances, so we have five hundred feet from a library. That doesn't impact this intersection. Five hundred feet from a college and that's going to just, it just took out one of the. General commercial zone properties because College of Lake County is located adjacent to this property. Five hundred feet from parks and so apparently there's a park in the village of Brace Lake that is just taken out. Some more of the general commercial area. We didn't use houses of worship in our draft buffering, schools of a thousand foot buffers. Forest preserves have two hundred fifty foot buffers. Hospitals have five hundred foot buffers, it's not surprising that nothing is changing here because there are no hospitals and forest preserves near this area. Daycare is five hundred feet and again daycare is again one of those. Uses that changes. Monthly or less than monthly and actually, if we were to adopt this ordinance. And a dispensary would like to locate in a specific area, they would have to, they would have to show us. And we would have to verify that in fact, none of these sensitive uses. Are within the buffer distance required by the ordinance. So we're, this is not a static process, this is something that we will require each individual applicant if they. Choose to locate in an area in unincorporated Lake County to show that they aren't within the buffer distances that we require and again, we would verify that. And the last buffer distance is two hundred fifty feet from residential. And you see when we turn on residential buffering, that really is the buffer that most significantly impacts. The general commercial zoning districts in unincorporated Lake County. By virtue of the way commercial is laid out in unincorporated Lake County, it generally is only one parcel deep. Along major roads and therefore, the property behind it tends to be residential and therefore, it's knocked out. Almost immediately. So this intersection of Gages Lake and Route forty five, the general commercial would not be eligible for. Location of a dispensary based on the the draft ordinance. Our draft ordinance says that if a buffer crosses a parcel into a parcel that's on general commercial, limited industrial or intensive industrial. Then therefore, the whole parcel is unavailable for the location of a dispensary, it's not just. If there's an area of a parcel that is not covered, then you could put a dispensary there, no, it has to be, the whole parcel has to be free of. Of any of these buffers. There are however, of course, places in unincorporated Lake County where there are parcels that. Are not crossbanning these buffers and there is an example just up the road from Gages Lake and forty five, this is the intersection of Grand and forty five. So you can see that there are some properties where there are, there's no buffering and and according to the draft ordinance. These areas, which again are in general commercial, would be eligible for a. A license for a dispensary. Now they would still have to go through the the conditional use permit process, it's not, we, they aren't permitted by right. And there are public hearings that are associated with a conditional use. Permit, permit process. So I can show you that there are some areas, if we zoom out and look at more of the county. The areas that tend to be eligible for, a potentially eligible for a. A. Dispensary are located in isolated areas and unincorporated Lake County, so this is the intersection of Route forty five and state line. And as you can see around it is, this green area is a agricultural zoning district, so there is no. Residential. Within four hundred feet, five hundred feet of this area, six hundred feet, a thousand feet, there's just not any residential, there's also. Another site at the corner of. Or at the intersection of. Route forty one and the state line. And in this area, the general commercial is this area where a dispensary could be located and then you see LI. It's limited industrial that also is an area that potentially could have a dispensary. So there was a question about the location of these dispensaries in the chain of a lake area. There is no, there are no commercial sites on the chain that are eligible for a dispensary. The areas that include the marinas and the associated RV parks, et cetera, that are on the chain. Are all zoned recreational, commercial and recreational, commercial is not a zoning district. That according to the draft ordinance would allow for the location of a dispensary. So the closest area on the chain that potentially would allow for a dispensary. Would be located on Route one seventy three near Deep Lake Road. There it is, there's the site. And actually, the, any dispensary that would like to service this area probably would be locating in the two villages along the chain that actually. Currently have approved the sale of recreational, commercial because they're they're much closer than that site on Route forty five. I mean, I'm sorry, in Route seventy three and 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 Deep Lake Road. So you can see down in the count, southern portion of the county, there are. There is. One area that you can see general commercial. But again, if you turn on the buffering, there is one small parcel that is eligible, this is Route twelve. I'll turn off the. The buffering, the residential buffering for a second so you can get a better idea, so it's Barrington Road and Route twelve, there's one parcel in this area. That potentially would be eligible, but again, it would have to go through a conditional use permit process. There is a large area of commercial use in the southern portion of the county that's GO, this is not, again, a zoning district. That does not allow for the location of dispensaries. It's happens to be where Good Shepherd Hospital is located and it would be unlikely even if it had the right zoning, that Good Shepherd would be interested in having that type of use on their property. There is. An area in Fremont Township. That is located in a predominantly, I'm going to turn off the parcels for a second, there it is. When you turn the parcels on, it makes the maps and draws slower. So there's an area here in Fremont Township that has, potentially has, could be a site of dispensaries. But again, it's primarily surrounded by agricultural uses. So really, despite the nature of the way commercial is in unincorporated Lake County. And being that it's primarily along major roads, but it's generally only one parcel deep. You're not going to find many locations for. A dispensary in an area that has a significant amount of residential. Development around it and by the way, the the term dispensary, which is is kind of a strange word. Is the word that the state uses to designate these, this retail use, it's not a term that we chose, it's the term the state used. And that's why we're using the term dispensary as to describe the retail use, we we have to meet what the state's. Requirements are. So along the actual, along the more areas of the county where there's a very little. Unincorporated land, there are some areas that are zoned. For industrial use, it's general office there, but this this LI use is actually where the state, I mean, where the county's. Suits treatment plant is, so again, that's not going to be a likely spot for a dispensary, I can't see. Us allowing that type of a use and on our suits treatment plant. There are some uses up in the, in near Lake Bluff, they are better zoned, limited industrial. And this is Abbott's property, the pharmaceutical company's property and and again. We don't believe that this would be a site that would. Would be turned into a dispensary location. So that's, that's my demonstration for today, thank you.
Thank you, Tom, let me get the slides pulled back up here if everybody can just bear with me for one second. Okay, so thank you, thank you again, Tom. So continuing, in addition to those sensitive use buffers. So continuing, in addition to those sensitive use buffers, other regulations that pertain to dispensaries. Include a thirty foot minimum building setback from property lines. Parking requirements for dispensaries would be determined on a site and application specific basis. Rather than having to just meet a simple minimum number of required spaces. So as, as part of the application process, proposed projects would have to provide a parking study and a parking plan. That would determine the amount of parking needed and how that those applicants would be meeting that requirement, both in the short term initial grand opening phase when demand. Has, is typically higher based on, on other dispensaries that we've, we've watched open up in the past year. And as well as on a long-term basis, once operations sort of settle down into a more routine, normal operating mode. So despite site-specific phased parking requirement was one of the things that we developed. Based on observations, like I said, that were, that we've made with the dispensaries that opened since the beginning of twenty twenty. So as I also mentioned earlier, there would be no drive-through sales allowed, nor would any onsite consumption be allowed. At any retail business, including dispensaries and tobacco stores. And finally, other components are incorporated that address design and operational standards related to hours of operation signage and security. And those are similar to the regulations that are already in place for medical dispensaries. And also follow specific standards that are set forth in the state act as well. So the second section of development standards covers the, the growing and production side of the industry. This section, similar to dispensary rules. Are also subject to buffering from sensitive land uses. As drafted, the amendment specify that cannabis cultivation centers, processing centers, infusers and craft growers. Would not be allowed to operate within twenty, two hundred and fifty feet from all identified sensitive land uses. A thirty foot minimum building setback would apply. And the parking standard would specify that two and a half spaces per a thousand square feet of floor area would be required. And that's a typical standard in our ordinance for manufacturing and production uses. There are also specific operational floor area standards for infusers and processors. And standards relating to signage, security, video surveillance and noxious odors. And then finally, we have the transportation facilities. So those businesses would be subject to general development standards in the ordinance. That are applicable to all non-residential uses. And that includes lighting requirements, access to the site. A thirty foot minimum building setback would again apply and business operators would have to provide. One off-street parking space for every employee. And lastly, there would be, there are specific standards for signage, security and video surveillance. And limits on those noxious odors. So now I'm going to, as Eric mentioned at the beginning. Going to. Switch to a different screen. And, and do a very quick run through of the amendment packet. Before turning it back over to Chair Kaplan. So the, the amendment packet, which was attached to the agenda today, and it was, it's also available on our department website. So it begins with. Amendments to the use table. And that's, again, it lays out those similar to that table that we looked at earlier in the presentation. It lays out the six different types of uses, which. Res, excuse me, non-residential zoning districts that those uses would be allowed in and whether or not a CUP would be required. And then the amendments move into an introduction. And then it gets into the first section of regulations which apply to dispensaries. And then. Those continue. So we have the dimensional standards. We have our parking standards, as we already discussed. There's those standards for display and signage. And, and the operational standards. And then the next section, number two, deals with the cultivation centers, the processing centers, the infusers and craft growers. And it's laid out similar, similarly to the dispensaries. It starts off with the dimensional standards. Has the parking requirements and details on signage and those operational standards. As well as the security and video surveillance odors and onsite conduct. And then finally, the third section we have is for the transporters. And that includes all the requirements that we've already mentioned. And then the last section of the amendment packet is the specific definitions for each of those types of business facilities. And those. Come straight from the, the state act. So with that. I will turn it back over to Chair Kaplan.
Sounds good. Thank you to Eric, Krista and Tom for very thorough presentation. A lot was covered there and we appreciate you repeating that from Monday night as well. At this time, I'll turn it over to any ZBA members that have any questions before we move into the public comment section. Any zoning board members have any questions of staff on the presentation from today? Seeing and hearing none. We will now move forward with the public comment section. Just to go back real quick, there were no non-agenda item public comments submitted prior to or during today's meeting. So we will not have any of those. There were no cross-examination appearance forms that were submitted. And we did not receive any organizational presentation. Request forms. Before we did receive some in writing. ZBA members were, were given these prior to the hearing from Cindy Sang. From unincorporated Warren Township. That was William and Cynthia. They are against, they wanted to make their. Wish is known. Cheryl Van Dusen. In the chain of Lakes area also wanted to voice that she was against cannabis and unincorporated areas. Angie Savalos. Against allowing it unincorporated areas. And we also had a letter submitted Kimberly Saunders on behalf of the Barrington Area Council of Governments. Representing a couple of organizations against allowing it unincorporated areas as well. In addition to that, via the survey monkey that was on the website. We did get about, I think I added up about. Twenty comments or so, fifteen to twenty comments in there from various people. Those were submitted to the board members prior to the hearing today. And all board members did have a chance to look at those for the record. At this time, I'll turn it over to Brad to go over the public comment section of today's hearing.
Public comment qualifies as testimony at the hearing. Public comment shall be subject to the following rules and procedures. Members of the public are allowed to make comment or statement about regulations. Please be aware that the Lake County staff and ZB members do not answer questions from the public during the hearing. The chair shall not be required to allow every person who wishes to address the board to do so where the comments are repetitive or, or prior comments. Any person who is not allowed to make remarks during the public comment shall be permitted to submit written comments to the board secretary. Each person will be permitted to speak one time only unless the chair determines that allowing a speaker to address the board, again, will contribute new information directly relevant to a subject matter listed on the agenda. Each person speaking shall be permitted to speak for no more than three minutes. All comments must be civil in nature. Any person who engages in threatening or slanderous or disorderly behavior when addressing the board. May be deemed out of order by the chair and their time to address the board at said meeting shall end.
It sounds good. Thank you, Brad. We will go through, I think they had about fourteen or fifteen individuals that indicated they may want to speak today. If your topic was covered and you do not wish to make a comment, just say pass. If we don't hear from you, we will assume that you either signed off or you do not have a comment anymore. Staff will read those names off. Staff will unmute you. So just hold tight, they'll unmute you. And then we'll be able to hear your comments. Limit those to three minutes. There'll be a timer that'll be set up that you'll all be able to see. And once you get over that three minutes, I'll just give you a little, a little nudge that you should wrap it up. So at this time, I'll turn it over to staff to begin with our public comments. And once again, we will not be answering questions, nor, nor the staff. This is comments only.
Thank you. Okay. First, we have Andy Duran.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Duran. Just for the record too, if you could just submit what town you're located in, just so we have that for the files.
You bet. I'm in Lake Bluff.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead with your comments, sir.
You bet. I'm coming to you today as the CEO of Lake Forest-based Drug Prevention Nonprofit Lead. I'm also an elected member of the Lake Bluff District sixty five Board of Ed. More importantly, I'm the father of two children, a fifth grader and a third grader. I'm here today just with one simple request. That the Planning Commission and the Lake County Board places the health and well-being of our county and our youth over the profits of the marijuana industry and over any proposed tax dollars. By not allowing zoning amendments that would permit adult-use cannabis businesses in unincorporated Lake County. I'm proud to live here in Lake County, a place that has cultivated a very safe and family-friendly reputation, as well as home to many of the state's best school districts. Being a marijuana hub would weaken this brand. A recent study published in the journal Society for the Study of Addiction showed that teens and young adults who live within close proximity to a marijuana dispensary. Are positively associated with more frequent use of marijuana within the past month than those who are, who do not. The correlation is that the closer a young person lives to a marijuana dispensary, the more likely they are to be regular marijuana users. If you review the maps that we're just gone over a few minutes ago, you'll find that there are already plenty locations in Lake County where marijuana businesses are operating. In my opinion, we don't need to open up additional locations in unincorporated areas and therefore have more of our Lake County youth living within this close proximity. In states that have already legalized or commercialized marijuana, roughly seventy-five percent of municipalities and unincorporated areas have opted out of retail sales. Many of our neighboring communities in Illinois have already taken action to do the same. The money argument isn't even relevant as far as I'm concerned. But even if this did tend to be, prove to be a windfall, our community values are not for sale. I know this county well enough to know that it does not want to accept revenue from an industry that profits from addiction and harms our youth. Here's what I do know. Marijuana is a harmful addictive substance, period. Number two, more than ninety percent of addiction begins in adolescence. The industry knows this and knows that their best chance of getting long-term customers is to start with teens, young adults. Regulation does not lead to less youth use. Just look at alcohol and tobacco. The two most abused substances by youth in our country. There's no reason to rush into allowing dispensaries in unincorporated Lake County. We already have some available for use for those people who want to drive to get it. The most prudent approach, the most prudent approach seems to be to continue this opt-out and find-out rather than to allow our youth to be a test tube for drug policy. This is maybe the most important point, and I'm coming to you as someone who's elected to you all who also have similar roles. Our youth look to their community leaders to set the example. And they're always watching to see what we do and how we act. I take that responsibility very seriously as an elected member of my local school board. Taking the action of opting out not only safeguards our community from an increase in drugs and drug traffic. By limiting the number of places that a dispensary can be open, but even more importantly, it sends a message to our youth that we value their well-being above all else and that we do not endorse getting high. As a way to recreate. So I ask you to please protect our county, both its unincorporated areas and the adjacent cities, towns and villages from consequences that will detract from Lake County being the amazing place to live that it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duran. And you timed that at exactly three minutes. Good job. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. And we will put those into the record.
Thank you. The next person we have on our list is Angie Savellus. I apologize if I, to everyone, if I mispronounce your name. So Angie.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. I would just like to say that I agree with everything that Andy Duran just said. I felt that a lot of my questions were answered during today's presentation. And so I have nothing else to say other than I totally agree with what Andy Duran said. And thank you for saying it so well. I'm done.
Great. Thank you, Angie. Appreciate that.
Next, we have Megan Miles.
Ms. Miles, are you with us still?
I am there. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you. Go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm Megan Miles. I am a school counselor at Lake Forest High School. I'm also a resident of the Shields Township, unincorporated Lake County area. As a counselor for many years, twenty years now, Lake Forest High School, we have seen. A lot of different wonderful things at our school and a lot of real challenges and, you know, concerns regarding more parent use. Increasing more student use. You know, those concerns are pretty real in our school community. And I just wanted to make sure that those were expressed. Also, as a resident of a, you know, unincorporated area. Concerns about, you know, just the community as well as, you know, the students that reside there. So just expressing that the kids, again, as Andy said. Are really a primary concern and decisions that adults in the community make significantly impact the decisions that their kids make. And, you know, sometimes they need a little help and support in making those decisions. So reminding everyone to just keep them first. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Miles. Appreciate your comments.
Okay, next on our list, we have a Robin Weiss-Gurber.
Hello.
Hi, Robin. We can, we can hear you. Go right ahead. You've got three minutes.
Okay. I did not prepare comments. I wasn't sure what to expect here. One comment I want to say is that. There is absolutely no. Research. That determined that. Marijuana, that cannabis is an addictive substance. There are studies on nicotine and alcohol that they are addictive substances. Any person with an addictive personality can be addicted to anything. Sugar is also addictive. And there's, you know, there's a twelve-step program for Overeaters Anonymous. That doesn't mean we. Make food illegal. So what I'm getting at is that as a resident of. My mailing address is Grays Lake, but I'm in Round Lake Park. I am for the legalization of these businesses. I think it's a great opportunity for employment. For, for small business. And from what I'm understanding, the laws and regulations and the placement of these facilities is very safe and. A wonderful opportunity for the community to grow. So thank you for listening.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Weiss-Gurber.
Thank you. Next, we have Jimmy Thomas.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Thomas. Go right ahead.
Um, so my name is Jimmy Thomas. My family and I live in Libertyville and own and operate a small business here in unincorporated Lake County for over twenty years. As an entrepreneur, I was very interested when the state passed legislation allowing adult-use cannabis. As minority and social equity applicant, I feel this legislation was a huge opportunity for applicants like myself to get into new burgeoning industries such as cannabis. In anticipation of being awarded a license or at least opportunity to develop and lease the site, I've been trying to get the necessary zoning for an adult-use cannabis business on the site. And have closely followed all the public hearings and county board meetings. I strongly feel that our property is located in an ideal place for cannabis sales. We are along a major highway, isolated from, isolated away from residential developments and with all, within all the distances the state is requiring. But the language in the local ordinance would not allow my site or many other potential sites for that matter, in unincorporated areas of the county to be zoned for adult-use cannabis. As a resident of Lake County, I really do understand and agree with the sentiment from the public as far as not wanting it in their communities or near residential areas, schools, parks. Or any other densely populated areas. As a business owner in the county, I also understand the economic opportunity it poses for minorities like myself. With that, I feel there are sensible changes that can be made to the existing ordinance. To accomplish both goals. First, I suggest we define residential areas to include a certain number of properties, such as five or more residential. As. Or define residential as an occupied residence. There are some properties like by my proposed site that is zoned residential, but does not have a home built on that property. Second, I suggest we define forest preserve owned land as areas that are accessible to the public. My property is bordered by property owned by the forest preserve, but there's no public access to get to that area, nor is it considered a recreational, recreational area. I feel these sensible changes would allow the county to not only address the public sentiment on adult-use cannabis, but also show that the county is truly a community of opportunity to minorities and social equity applicants like myself. And I hope you guys would consider my changes.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Thomas. And thanks for operating a business in Lake County as. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Thomas, and thanks for operating a business in Lake County as well.
Thank you. Next on our list, we have Jeff Murphy.
Mr. Murphy, are you there? I do not hear Mr. Murphy. So if you want to go on to the next one, Krista.
Yeah, we can. We'll come back to him. The next person on the list is Cheryl Van Dusy.
Okay, hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My overall hope is that we will not allow cannabis businesses in unincorporated Lake County. Restricting cannabis businesses in the area would have the least negative impact both on communities that have decided to allow these businesses as well as those who have chosen to ban them. In fact, unincorporated areas could help out to act as buffer between areas with different approaches. At least if cannabis businesses are allowed, some stronger buffers should be built into the UDO to protect children in recreational areas. Some of my concerns that I wrote in a question about the chain area may have been addressed, but since I know of rezoning to occur quite often, I'm still going to address what I was considering when I looked at the map originally. Regarding children, buffers protecting residences where children may actually live should be commensurate with those protecting daycares, libraries and schools where they come together, even if there's only one resident. In unincorporated Lake County, due in part to geographical features such as wetlands, areas have grown up with mixed residential and commercial zone. While commercial use is typically started out as compatible, low visibility and low impact, a change to a cannabis related use within two hundred and fifty feet of a nearby residence would be extremely incompatible. I would also urge that buffers should protect residents in Mulla Home Parks and long term rental that may not be on property that is residentially zoned as well. Regarding recreational areas, I believe that additional buffers are needed. They should be written in to protect in case other buffers change or other zonings change. These would be for bike paths and waterways. First, buffers should be written to protect bike paths as they are for parks and preserves. These places greatly enhance quality of life and Lake County has been highly invested in extending them. But without buffers, they're likely to invite problems with inappropriate use and even crime due to their somewhat secluded nature. Secondly, buffers should be written to protect the waterways. The chain of Lake, for example, is the number one busiest inland waterway in the US where numerous accidents, including some fatalities occur each year, often involving substance abuse. Research shows that cannabis use is associated with alcohol use and in combination the the two create greater impairment than either causes alone. Unfortunately, it appears that several of the location in Lake County that could be eligible to have cannabis businesses are around waterways or could be potentially rezoned. So I do ask that with places like restaurants, bars, marinas and resorts being among some of these children may be present and recreational safety are involved. So I would urge that buffers for waterways and businesses in proximity should be carefully considered. Thanks.
Thank you again for your kindness, Mr. Van Dusy.
Thank you. Next on our list, we have Rob Bryson.
Mr. Bryson, can you hear us? I think we did not have Mr. Are you there? We can hear you now. Go right ahead, sir.
Okay, hold on. I gotta go back to my notes.
No worries. We'll give you a second. Don't worry.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for a chance to speak on this. I am against the cannabis business in unincorporated Lake County. I believe communities should have significant involvement in this type of activity and that the communities in unincorporated Lake County don't have the organization or resources to properly for the proper level of involvement. I know our HOA, which is our collective voice, does not have the resources to follow this issue. I'm also opposed to this because Lake County would be fully responsible for assuring compliance and in the unincorporated areas, and this would require additional resources and funding. My experience in other areas where regulation are not followed in Lake County, Lake County has struggled with oversight and enforcement. I recommend keeping it simple. No businesses in unincorporated Lake County. And then I think just in summary, I think there's I I look at the work you've done and I think there's a much better use of of Lake County resources than having people continue to work on this zoning issue.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bryson.
Okay, that let's circle back to Mr. Murphy, Jeff Murphy. We had tried to get him on earlier. So let's give him a second try.
Sounds good.
Jeff, if you can hear us. Not sure what's going on. It looks like he's he's got he's he's not muted. So I'm not sure if he's having audio issues.
Krista, did you have anybody else or anybody else that did sign in that we?
Nobody is in nobody else that had previously signed up is in attendance, but maybe if you want if if there's anybody else that is in attendance, if they wanted to speak, we would allow them to raise their hand and indicate so.
But I'll leave. Absolutely. Absolutely. Any any public that did not register ahead of time, if you are on with us, we definitely want to give you that opportunity in your three minutes to speak. So if you would like to raise your hand, if you're unable to figure that out, if you'd like to hit the chat bar that you'd like to make a comment, we can have staff unmute you. So we'll give you a second for that. Just order housekeeping after we do finish up comments here and enclose testimony. I will take a five minute break just so the ZBA members can collect their thoughts before we get into any questions and comments the ZBA members may have. So once again, if you have any questions in the public out there, if you'd raise your hand at this time, if you've not spoken or let us know in the chat box and Alex will go ahead and unmute you and we'll get your comments in.
I don't see any additional hands being raised. Oh, wait, no, we just got a couple.
Okay.
James Boyle.
We'll let him be unmuted and James, once you can.
Yep. Can you can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir. Go right ahead.
Jim Boyle, Village of Bannacurn trustee, police commissioner, also co-president of CTAB. Got a few comments. Where I go while the state law allows local jurisdictions to regulate the number in zoning of marijuana establishments, the county and municipalities cannot regulate anything else once they are allowed. A speaker at the hearing on Monday night mentioned, for instance, that the county would not be able to regulate products and flavors designed to appeal to youth such as tutti fruity, blue skittles or bombcicles. The county could also not regulate the THC content that has been linked to increased psychosis and that is already happening in the state. The chief medical officer of the Silver Oaks Behavioral Hospital, Lou Bennix, was quoted in the Northwest Herald saying that marijuana induced psychosis increased fourfold since legalization. The county also cannot also can also not regulate advertising because marijuana is now for profit business in Illinois. It is logic that the amount of advertising would increase with every marijuana establishment. They, of course, are not allowed to market to minors, but the vaping industry is also not allowed to market to minors. As we all know, the vaping industry did and hooked a new generation when their brains were almost susceptible to addiction. The Lake County State's attorney even launched a lawsuit against them for illegal marketing to minors. Some school districts in Lake County have signed on to that lawsuit. Will the marijuana industry try to do the same? Well, marijuana chain Zen Leaf now has a billboard along the south side of Chicago featuring a raccoon wearing sunglasses with his arms up in the air like he's partying. He is very similar to the character Rocket from the very popular superhero movies Guardians of the Galaxy. This raccoon is also featured on a sandwich board outside Zen Leaf's location in Highland Park. While not a cartoon, he is more likely to appeal to teens more so than Joe Camel ever was. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Appreciate your comments. I did see in the chat that Mr. Murphy was having some audio trouble, so I think he's going to submit that via chat and Krista will read that into the record. Once we have that, Krista, any other participants raise their hand at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, we have Mr. Murphy a second. If we don't get it before we take a break, we can definitely read that after we come back from break two if I don't see it here. And once again, just for the public and those in attendance, thank you again for your comments. We do appreciate them. We take them all seriously as we as we decide this as well. Don't see Jeff's comments yet, so we will. We will take a five minute break. After we come back, the ZBA will have discussion over the amendment packets. There'll be a closing statement by staff. Then we'll be closing testimony and then we will be taking a vote today at the ZBA level. So if you'd like to stick around and wait for that, it is now about twenty two after let's let's say two thirty. We'll come back together. That'll give everyone a chance to stretch for a minute and staff get everything together on their end. So two thirty we'll we'll readjourn here if that's okay. For those still in line with us, we'll give you a two minute warning before we start back up at two thirty. So about two minutes we'll be getting in. Like we're just waiting at one more board member to come back being Marv, but once we see he's back, we'll start. And it looks like we are all back, so we will come together again on this one. We are at the point now, I believe Mr. Murphy did submit comment in chat that I saw. Read that into the record. Support the production, transportation, portions of cannabis, but stand against the micro retail sale businesses. And both unincorporated and incorporated Lake County, and that was from Jeff Murphy. So that'll be added to the record. Thanks, Mr. Murphy. Krista, we didn't see anybody else raise their hand, correct, while we were gone?
We did not.
Okay, sounds good. At this time, Krista, did you want to go through any more review for the ZBA, or do you want me to just open up discussion on that with the individual members?
I think we were planning on opening it up to you.
Perfect, sounds good.
I have the amendment packet. I can pull it up on the screen if there's particular sections we want to look at, just let me know.
Sounds, I think the way we're going to go about it is just go by section briefly. We're not going to read through everything. We'll start with page one. If a board member has a question, please feel free to intercheck at that time, but page one, we'll look first at the use table. Any questions or comments on that? And if you do, just jump in. I don't want to not recognize you, so if you've got something to say, just unmute yourself. Hearing none on that?
I had a question, I'm sorry.
Yep, go right ahead, Linda.
And one of the commentators today, one of the public mentioned, what is the zoning of mobile home parks? Is that a residential zoning? Is that considered a residential zoning district, or is it something else? In general?
Staff, would that be in RC, or do you have another use on that one?
Yeah, I think we're.
So I know that we did buffer mobile home parks as residential.
Okay.
Mobile home parks are permitted uses in certain residential zones, so they would be buffered.
So they are zoned residential, it's not some other designation then? Okay, thank you.
Right, sounds good. Any other questions on the use table?
I do have one question, Greg.
Yes, go ahead there, Denny.
Yeah, Tom said the word dispensary is a term used by the state. Is that in the statute when you're saying by the state?
Yes.
That is in the statute, but correct?
Correct.
I thought so, but I didn't, I just wanted to be clear on that.
And staff's recommendation, Member Hockney, is to maintain some consistency with the standard, with the terminology that the state uses, so that there's no confusion.
I agree with that. I just wanted to be clear that was in the statute.
Sounds good. Any other questions on the use table? Hearing none, we'll move on to adult-use cannabis facilities. Anything on page one? That'll be the preface down to bullet point one on there.
This is Maria Peterson.
Yeah, go ahead, Maria.
Um, if we were to follow the table in the order as it stands, adult-use cannabis dispensary, craft grower, processing center, et cetera. Why, I think we should use the same terminology in the same order in the preface. And this carries on through several sections of the ordinance. So for example, here it states, it is the purpose and intent of this section to provide zoning regulations of facilities that cultivate process-infused transport and dispense adult-use cannabis. I think for the reader, and certainly coming from the standpoint of an attorney, that it would just make more sense to follow the same order that it is in the table. And in fact, the word grow isn't even in this written list. And I would carry that throughout the ordinance where it's so noted. That's all.
Sounds good. Any members have any issue with that, if staff makes that adjustment to follow that throughout the text amendments? Sounds good. We will incorporate that into change then, when we go for a vote on this. Adult-use cannabis dispensary, section one, goes over to page two. Any comments on that? Anything on page two? We can take it this time.
Yeah, I have a question on page two dimensions.
Yep.
Okay, how are these dimensions established? Or minimum distances?
You're talking about from the property lines there, Marv, I assume? How are they?
Well, that intersects like five, fifteen hundred feet from other dispensaries. Within five hundred feet of existing daycares, a thousand feet of public-private schools and stuff. How are those dimensions established, or distances?
Sure. Staff, if you just want to clarify, I don't know if that's maybe Tom that would do that. I assume that's from property line to property line, but if we could have a clarification.
No, sure. Does Marv mean how did we establish a five-hundred-foot buffer, or how are we measuring it?
No, how was it determined? My thought is, why happens if you double those distances? What effect would that happen? I was going to ask you, Tom, because I thought your presentation today was very, very good and enlightening to me. At one time, Maria, you asked the question, how many existing places were eligible, and you came up, I think the number was six in the whole unincorporated area. What happens if you double these restrictions? Would that reduce it down to three, or two, or what?
It's difficult for me to say without, without actually doing it. There are buffers built into the application that we haven't used, so I could go through and make everything a thousand feet and see what was left, and five hundred feet for residential.
If I may, if we have the mapping tool available, still available and up and running, we could briefly switch screens to the mapping tool. And just for purposes of responding to Member Raymond's question, we can hypothetically establish a one-thousand-foot buffer for all the uses that we've identified here, just to show the ZBA what would happen if we increased those buffer distances. And in terms of the total number of uses that, of sites that would be rendered available versus unavailable on the basis of that change. If we could, Tom, is that still?
Yes, I can do that. So make everything a thousand?
Let's start with a thousand, see what happens, just hypothetically.
Yes.
And Tom, while you're working on that, I'll just ask if there's any other questions in the dimensional standards, parking, or visibility and security on this page.
I don't know if this is the right page, Greg, but in the testimony, the gentleman from municipal suggested that there should be some buffering between the boundary of a village or city and the unincorporated area.
This would probably be the right area to discuss that. We can ask staff how, if they looked at that as well.
What we can do for discussion purposes is start with the, with the increase of all the buffers that we've already identified.
Sure.
From a mapping standpoint, I don't believe, Tom, have you, do you have an actual municipal boundary buffer on the map? If not, I can safely assume that the, that would likewise, if we were to increase the and include a buffer requirement for adjacent municipalities that would have another that would have another limiting effect on the availability of sites, but unless we were to develop that that mapping function, we could not definitively tell the ZBA what the impact would be. It would certainly be limiting available sites below the whether it's half dozen or dozen sites that are already identified on the map, though, I will say that.
So as I'm panning through the map, I'm looking at the areas that I know were, would be, would allow for the cannabis right now, so it knocks out.
Tom, do you want to share this, your screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was. Sorry about that. So it takes a little longer for it to draw when it's got all these thousand-foot buffers on, but the one area that doesn't seem to be impacted with this thousand-foot buffers would be the the forty-five in the state line, leased on the west side. And then the area at forty-one and the state line would be knocked out too with a thousand-foot buffers.
Well, you see, I live on State Line Road, so.
So the answer is you'd be left with one available site?
Yeah, it really looks like it is. I'm panning through. I want to see if the Fremont Township site's knocked out too. I think it is.
Yeah, because you've got.
Yeah, here it is. Is it still available? No, there's still a couple. There's still a couple parcels on that Fremont Township site, so it would really knock out almost everything that's left except for those two sites, because they're the most isolated. They're the least likely to be surrounded by the residential buffering. And that's, this is taking a little while to dry. I don't know, for some reason, when we're down in the Barrington area, it takes a while to dry. That site wouldn't be available, because there's all residential. It wasn't one of the sites anyway. So it's really going to knock out almost everything. If you put a thousand square feet in, we'd only have the two on the state line. Or only the one on the state line, and the one in Fremont Township.
Yeah, I don't plan to grow marijuana on my farm.
Yeah. Yeah, and even the areas in, well, there'd still be some LI areas available, but again, this is the Abbott property or AbbVie property. So a thousand-foot buffers would knock most everything out. And again, it's primarily the residential buffers, because that's the majority. You know, we don't have a lot of commercially-zoned property, like the property in Fremont Township and the property at the state line that are surrounded by ag. Most of it's adjacent to residential, and so the residential buffers knock it out, because our residential zoning districts tend to be only one parcel deep. Unless it's a big site like Abbott.
Tom, when you say ag, I'm zoned ag.
Yeah. And so we didn't, so we didn't count ag as a residential zoning district in this exercise.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because all my neighbors on State Line Road were all agricultural.
Yeah.
Marv, does that answer your question?
You answered my question. Thank you very much for that information, and that's maybe something we should, could look at as far as dimensions are concerned.
That is note. Denny, did you have any follow-up to your question that you wanted to answer?
I thought that was a valid comment the other night. I thought we should consider it.
Sure. Any other comments on page two, or questions of staff on page two for the board?
I just, I echo the last comment from Marv about the considering, or not Marv, considering a buffer from municipalities, or perhaps municipalities who have banned it. So like a bit of a buffer for those municipalities that have banned it. Food for thought. So that we're not right next to them in an unincorporated area for an area that has the municipality banned it, and then the unincorporated county then is right next to it, and I think we should consider that.
Sounds good. I will add that to the list of things we consider before we take any action. Anything else on page two?
I'm just going to make a comment to the counter of that. In terms of, because a municipality could, on the flip side of it, decide later on, as some of the ones in the western area say, no, we've changed our mind and we're going to vote in favor of selling cannabis, or allowing cannabis dispensaries, or whatever, so. I don't know that I would engage in putting a buffer against a already suburb that has banned it. Maybe increasing the distance instead, or increasing the distance of the buffer may be a different way of approaching it.
Do we want to continue to talk about this now, since we have it before us, and get the opinion of the rest of the board? Why don't we do that, just to see?
I guess I would just, yeah, I would just say that, so, you know, if you have two towns that neighbor each other, and one town decided to have to allow for cannabis and the other one didn't, like, they're not necessarily going to put in a buffer, so I'm not sure that for the minimal amount of spaces that unincorporated Lake County takes up in comparison to other, you know, actual towns. I don't know.
John or Denny, any comments that you had on this?
No, I'm not exactly sure how that, it just seems to me it would be better to have it in than not have it.
John, how are you feeling about it?
Well, if we continue along these lines with these strict buffers and we're going to find that the municipalities are going to capitalize on it, because those that didn't want to have it close to them now are going to change their mind, because it'll be easier for them to put into practice. Good, good example was McHenry County. They drafted an ordinance that called for two thousand feet between any major road and a dog kennel. That's crazy. But it encouraged different types of animal raising and rearing.
I guess I tend to kind of agree with Member Roche a little bit on that too, on her comments, too, if we put one town next to the other, it's kind of an issue. So I'm, I'm okay with it the way it is, but if there's an argument that wants to be made on the other side, I think we're open to still talk about it. How are we feeling on that? All still the way we were before? Here we have any changes?
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is a question that I'll maybe pose to the state's attorney's office if they have, you know, if they've had an opportunity to think about this. Under the the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, there is the section in the, in the statute that deals with the authority of local governments to either prohibit or ban of, you know, cannabis businesses within their jurisdiction, or enact reasonable zoning regulations that are not in conflict with the act. And so one question that I would have would be, to the extent that additional buffering would have the effect of, of creating a de facto ban on cannabis businesses within the jurisdiction, because essentially they knock out all, or primarily all available sites, would that create greater risk to the county in terms of if we were to enact an ordinance, but effectively prevented businesses from from potentially finding an available site within the unincorporated area under that ordinance? Businesses from from potentially finding an available site within the unincorporated area under that ordinance. Would that pass the test with the statute? And that's something that maybe we don't have an answer for that today, but we can.
That would be that would be unreasonable zoning, not reasonable.
And that would be the argument that somebody would make along those lines if they wanted to challenge the ordinance as the county adopts it with. Well, strict limitations. I mean, if you're going to have such strict limitations, why don't you just prohibit it within the.
I agree. If you're going to do that, just say don't have it at all.
But the county does have the authority to adopt reasonable regulations. You know, it'd just be a basis for a challenge. There's no. Statute or case or statute, there's no case law to kind of give direction on how the courts would analyze that particular question. But it would essentially equate to being a ban. I don't know if Dan has any additional thoughts on that, but that's my perspective.
Yeah, there's some point in time where you go from reasonable to unreasonable.
I would agree, Denny.
I guess I bring raised that we are we talking about leaving the buffers, the numbers that are in the in the. Document the way they are right now. I know Marv brought that up with the thousand feet for everything. Are we still? Are we going back to original numbers?
I'm I'm personally okay with the original numbers. I guess I'd be happy to go around here with the other members are thinking. Maria, how are you feeling about it?
I'm fine with the numbers the way they are. I mean, clearly yesterday when we went through the maps and then again today, going through the maps. It's it's. Very minimal availability in Lake County. I mean, it's. To make it super restrictive. And then if this ordinance passes, you're opening. Lake County up to a possible lawsuit for really suppression. Of a potential business. And I don't think that's the direction we want to go.
Remember Roche, how are you feeling? Just going around my screen here.
Uh, I'm fine with the original.
Okay, Denny, how are you?
I'm okay with the original numbers. I just wanted to be clear that's where we were.
Yep, that's what we're trying to do. Marv, how are you feeling?
I raised the question out of curiosity.
Absolutely.
Then Tom's math was so excellent and he came up with the answer. That basically nullifies this whole question. And I agree with what's written here. Let's just leave it. We're talking about a minimal number of places to start out with. And I think we were very correct. We just opened ourselves up to suits.
I'm fine with the original numbers as presented document.
Great, thanks. And John, Randall?
I am as well. But we still, you know, if we're looking for control over these things. And we're only using the buffers as the control. Let's not forget we have a. Conditional use permit that really is a hell of a lot stricter than any buffers could be. Depending upon the policy of the board.
Good point. Perfect. So hearing distances stay the same at this time. Parking invisibility, security, anything? Move on to page three, exterior display and signage.
Could we flip to the?
Sorry, yes, let me show my screen again.
Sure, thank you. So the public can see it as well there. Yeah, exterior display, signage and operational hours. I did have one question on the operational hours, the six AM. I didn't look what the other dispensaries, the one in Mundalina, some of the other ones with their hours were seemed a little early. But again, just one of those questions of where we came up with the six to ten o'clock.
So again, I'm I'm not a subject matter expert on the details of the statute, so I may lean on staff and state's attorney's office a little bit. But I think that we may have derived the hours of operation consistent with what the statute provisions were. And out of an attempt to not be inconsistent. With the statutory requirements and there's a provision under local zoning that you cannot be inconsistent with the statute. We wanted to maintain that alignment with the statutory hours. I may be misstating that, so please feel free to correct me if I'm if I'm wrong, staff or state's attorney.
That's my recollection as well that we were following what was. Put in the statute.
I just looked, I was just looking up real quick here. It looks like Mundalina is six to eight PM, six AM to eight PM are their hours. And then I looked up another one in the city of Chicago is ten AM to eight PM for their hours. Again, just just throwing it out there if nobody else has a concern about it, but it was just seemed like some. Some long hours there compared to what others have. Anyone else have comments on exterior signage or operational hours? Hearing or seeing none, we'll move on to page four, security and video surveillance. On-site consumption will take the dispensary section there.
Again, this is Maria Peterson. With regard to the security and video surveillance number four. Where it's the second sentence of paragraph four says, the director has the discretion to conduct periodic review. Of security features as appropriate. My question is. Two-fold. One is how will this be? How will the record keeping be done on this? And secondly, how will we ensure that these periodic reviews are equitable amongst the dispensaries?
So if I may, the the process of going through a periodic review of security features. Would be an administrative function that would be derived on the basis of a policy, an administrative policy. That would be worked out between the department and the sheriff's office. And as appropriate consultation with representatives from the state. To ensure that we're looking at the right things in the right timeframe and that we're doing everything consistently. So if we were to entertain a proposed location and if. The the ZBA were to grant a conditional use permit for a dispensary. We would enact at that point in time, these administrative procedures. To conduct these periodic security reviews. As a matter of public record, we would maintain files. For for the, you know, public inspection. With appropriate redaction for security purposes or if there's a, you know, any FOIA exemptions that would apply. But we would maintain a a record of all security reviews and inspections that were. Undertaken as a result of the administrative policy that we would put forth. In order to equitably and evenly. Do security reviews across the establishments. Now, there may be a circumstance under which a particular establishment. Has been operating inconsistently with our standards or with the state standards, in which case there might be. A need for an enhanced security review, either by us or by the state. That could also affect potentially the state licensure of a property for a dispensary. So. We would have to include adequate safeguards in a policy to allow for that enhanced. Security review if there were some concerns about the way a particular dispenser was being operated. Does that answer your question, Member Peterson? I think you're still muted.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks. Any other questions on security and video surveillance and onsite consumption?
Oh, I'm sorry. I have one more.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
And letter J onsite consumption. There, this is the first mention of retail tobacco stores. And in the amendment section, there is no definition of a retail tobacco store. So a tobacco store could be anything from a convenience store within a gas station. It could be, it can be construed in several ways and. I I think it needs to be defined and if you're going to have it here on J. Because suddenly it's just thrown in there within with no preface.
We could, we could work on expanding or providing that definition and expanding on the context for that. A point of information for the ZBA, this is. The the reason why we incorporated a reference to the retail tobacco stores in this. Is because after the original CRTA statute was adopted. There was an amendment to the statute that allowed for onsite consumption at retail tobacco stores if allowed by the local. Unit of local government. Well, we wanted to make sure at staff level was that it was. Clear in no uncertain terms that. Onsite consumption would be prohibited in the draft. Not only at any cannabis locations, but also a retail tobacco store. So that's why we incorporated that into the. Into the standards. And so we could, of course, further define that specific category. For reference purposes and definition definition section and we can, we can't do that right now at the moment, but we could put in a placeholder. If ZBA were comfortable with that or that we could have ready to roll by the time. This matter goes before the PWPT committee.
Right, great. Thank you.
Sounds like a good catch. Everybody else okay with that too? If we put a placeholder in there to allow. That definition to go in. Perfect, hearing the thing against it, we will assume you are. Moving on to section two, adult use cannabis cultivation center, process center, infuser and craft grower. Anything on page four that you've got questions on? At the bottom of page four. We can continue on to page five as well. Parking or signage, any questions on those sections? And a meth operational standards on the bottom of page five, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to page six, security and video surveillance.
It's Maria again.
Yeah. Go right ahead.
Going down to section H, noxious odors. It goes, there's a provision of and comma if necessary. How how is the unnecessary determined?
So what we would do in at a staff level in determining whether this standard has been met is. By assessing the the ventilation system on the basis of the location of the proposed. Production facility, depending on where that facility was located. There may be a need for mitigation measures. But if the site was remote enough, that would be less of a concern. A lot of it also has to do with the manner of production within the facility itself. And so depending on the the mechanisms and controls in place within the building. And that the amount of product, type of product, the type of processing involved, we would have to make a decision. As to whether those types of internal processes and mechanisms would would actually. Be of such a nature as to require. Odor mitigation. It may be that in some cases you don't need odor mitigation because there's no odor being created by. The by the production. Or infusion or what have you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that page for noxious odors or conduct on site before we move on to the transporter? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go on to number three, adult use cannabis transporter. We can turn to page seven on that. It'll also include parking, signage. And start of security at the bottom of page seven. Any questions or comments on those?
I I will point out for informational purposes to the ZBA, we staff kind of struggled a little bit with. This with the transporter category, just for information, for your information. We anticipate that a a number of these types of businesses would be larger operations with a lot of. Potential truck traffic to and from, but there is possible scenario in which it's a smaller. Type of business with a less of a footprint, less of a of an impact on surrounding areas. And in such cases, it it may be warranted. To require, instead of requiring a, if you could zoom in on that use table there. And look at the transporter category. And instead of requiring that those uses be located only in the industrial zones, it may in some limited circumstances. Be appropriate to allow them as a CUP in the general commercial zone, the logic being that depending on the size. Of the facility and the number of vehicles involved, it may be not dissimilar to a lot of. Sort of run of the mill, smaller truck oriented businesses that operate in the unincorporated area. But staff, you know, we wanted to err on the side of being a little cautious at the beginning of this exercise and drafting the material. So. Wanted to point out that we did struggle with that as staff and it's certainly the ZBA is prerogative to maintain. The the thresholds, the way that they're written, because that is the way we were proposing them. But we wanted to acknowledge that we had some challenges internally with with this particular. Arrangement.
Well, and Eric, we can determine that like Marv said in the if through the application of a CUP, correct?
On under the current standard, if it was adopted as is. There would be no ability for a transporter to locate within the GC zone. So a CUP is not an option under the current. Iteration.
That could be an addition if the if the if board members so choose to, we would add. The conditional use permit requirement to allow, potentially allow transporters in GC.
How's the board feel about that? Any comments?
And we're not, and just so I'm clear, we're not, we're not recommending that this, we we stand by the text as it's as it's written. But we wanted to acknowledge that this is one of the more nuanced areas of research that. That staff had a difficult time with it.
Yeah, that could be amended if necessary later.
It could be.
Yeah.
Any, any of these categories could be amended later as necessary, or even at the PWPT committee when it goes forward. If if staff's original research and the, you know, and and the. Perspective of of the of the officials involved in the decision-making process change. So anything here is, anything here is is open to change as time goes by, like any ordinance. We may know more three years from now than we know today about the nature of the business. And so that might warrant changes at that point in time. As well as the market matures.
Add on to that, one of the challenges is there currently aren't any transportation, just strictly transportation facilities. Because they have not started releasing those licenses yet. So it's it's somewhat difficult to predict. What the size or scope of those businesses, you know, what makes the most sense for for the industry. So.
Anyone else have a strong opinion one way or? Anyone else have a strong opinion one way or another? Otherwise, seems like we may leave it as is and just continue to look at that.
I'd leave it as is and it necessary can be amended later.
Sounds good. If anybody has an argument against that, want to speak up now, otherwise we'll leave it as is. Sounds good. Thanks, Danny. Anything else on number seven, parking signage, security and video surveillance? Hearing none, anything on page eight, again, noxious odor and conduct on site. Hearing none, page nine, the terms defined below. Maria, this is where I think staff will put that tobacco, retail tobacco store definition in there, if that's okay with you. Is that what you were thinking too?
Yes.
Perfect. Staff will put a placeholder on there. I'm sure we have a definition in the ordinance somewhere that they can pull that from. That concludes the text amendments submitted by staff. Besides the tobacco definition, the only other one that I had written down as a note and if I, there's others that I missed was on page one. I remember Peterson, I think that was kind of the grammatical listing change that you wanted to see throughout the the text amendments. Is that correct?
Correct.
Perfect.
Excuse me, member Peterson, I think, were you also suggesting that the the overall organization of the sections where you started, you start with, if you go to the top, you go with, you start with, you know, on the use table dispensaries all the way down to transporters, want to make sure that those are aligned as well. They flow in the same sequence in the in the use sections themselves.
Right, that it be that it be consistent throughout the entire ordinance.
Right.
Yeah, the the sections actually do flow. Yeah, so it begins with dispensary. And then apologize for my rapid scrolling here, but the second section is those cultivation and processing. So I've revised the order there. And then the transporters are last. So that does.
It lines up. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thanks for doing that. So quick, Chris. Okay, with that, I think that concludes everything that we've got there. Staff, any other comments from you before we close testimony? State's attorney, just to check, is there anything else we need to do before we close testimony as well? And make.
No, I think you're good. You've you've come gone through any every element of your agenda for conducting a public hearing. So you can post testimony and then do your delivery and make a recommendation for the county board.
Perfect. Sounds good. Any other comments from staff before we close testimony on this and turn it back to the ZBA to make some comments? Hearing and seeing none, a motion would be in order then to close testimony on the adult use cannabis text amendments.
I'll move.
Second.
It was a first from Denny, a second from member Starkey. Any discussion? Brad, roll call, please.
Member Hockney.
Hi.
Member Starkey.
Hi.
Or Peterson.
Hi.
Member Raymond.
Hi.
Member Rindel.
Hi.
Member Roche.
Hi.
Chair Captain.
Hi.
Testimony is close, seven zero.
Sounds good. Thank you. We will start with your comments before we go for a vote. We'll start with member Hockney. How do you feel?
Well, the my my feelings are, I think there's two things here. One, we had a lot of testimony and most of it was not to have a text amendment. However, my understanding of why we held the hearing was to get comments on the text amendment itself. And so I think we've done that. And so I'm okay with our discussion and what's what's happening with the text amendment. I don't think it's our, I don't think it's our responsibility to say don't have, don't have the text amendment.
Sounds good. Thanks, Danny. Member Peterson?
I agree. I think we've done our due diligence and over overs looking over the text amendments. We've had some thorough discussion about it and heard public comment. And I think at this point, it's just for us to vote on this and and move it to the next phase.
Thanks, member Peterson. Member Raymond.
I agree the way in which this thing was written is very well done, and it's not our purpose to make a value judgment onto it. Because coming from my professional background, I could raise a lot of questions as far as the moral issues are concerned. And and that's not what we're supposed to be doing. So I will totally agree. If you want to talk about moral issues, I can bring you up a lot.
Thanks, Marv. Appreciate the comments. Member Rindel.
I don't have a problem with staff's report here. In fact, I compliment him on it. It's just the way we would go through creating a new ordinance for any sort of business. So I'm cool with moving ahead.
Sounds good. Thanks, John. Member Roche?
I I don't have very many comments other than that, you know, as usual, the staff has done such a good job researching, presenting all the issues and and writing the ordinance that I you know, with the things that we've discussed this afternoon, I'm okay with it moving on.
Great. Sounds good. Thanks, Maggie. And member Starkey?
I think we had a good discussion, public input, and thank you again to the staff for preparing the amendment, proposed amendment. And I think it spells out reasonable regulations pertaining to the subject matter. So I'm in agreement to move forward.
Sounds good. Thanks, Linda. I too echo the comments of fellow board members. We are a zoning board, and that was our challenge. And that was what we were tasked to do to look at the actual zoning and text amendments that would go into this. I think the county board did a good job and put in that moratorium early, allowing to see what happened in other towns and other municipalities and other counties. And I think staff has done an outstanding job in researching what those other communities have done and what other counties have done too. So I again applaud the staff. I applaud the county board and the committees for the way they handled this. And and I too feel this is something that I will support as it moves forward through the committee process and the full county board process as well. With that, I also want to thank the public for their comments. We sat through their comments on Monday night. We appreciate you taking your night. We appreciate the comments you you submitted today, and we heard verbally too. They are appreciated and they do not go unheard. You will continue to have an opportunity to make those comments both at the committee level and both at the county board level. So I encourage you to follow those through if you have any follow up comments as well. But thanks for your time as well. And thanks to those county board members that joined throughout the hearings as well. With that, we will need a motion then to adopt these text amendments as an order with the changes that we discussed.
I'll move. I move that we accept the proposed amendments to chapter 151 of the Lake County Illinois Code of Ordinances relating to the regulation of adult use cannabis businesses for with the provisions that we discussed this afternoon with the chain proposed changes and that it be moved on to the next step.
I'll do a motion from member Peterson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for member Starkey, I believe that was. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Brad, roll call if you would.
Member Peterson.
Hi.
Member Starkey.
Hi.
Member Hockney.
Hi.
Member Raymond.
Hi.
Member Rindel.
Hi.
Member Roche.
Hi.
And Chair Captain.
Hi.
The fable recommendation is past seven zero.
Sounds good. Thank you again to all the ZBA members for the extra time and effort you put in. It is appreciated. Thanks again to staff. And we will get updates from staff on our next hearings that we have coming up. But have a wonderful afternoon, everyone.
Oh, did Eric want to say something?
Eric, did Eric, did you have anything there?
Did one, one final comment. This is
Yeah, go for it. Sorry about that.
For the benefit of the public, we we now that we've concluded the ZBA public hearing on adult use cannabis business zoning. We move the matter forward to the Public Works Planning and Transportation Committee. We've been looking at the calendar with the process in mind and how the steps flow from one step to the next. And right now we have a tentative plan to bring the ZBA recommendations forward to the PWPT committee a week from today, which is Wednesday, the 28th. We will be putting information out on that. We'll be updating our website to that effect. But we want to make it clear to the public that you'll have an opportunity under public comment at the PWPT committee meeting on that item to, you know, provide further comment to the committee as it reviews the ZBA recommendations and makes up its own mind about the proposed text. And so please look forward to that. I assume that there's going to be coverage of this in local media, but we will make sure that we can broadcast out as widely as possible information about this next step in the process going forward. So thank you.
Great. Sounds good. Thanks for that clarification or to the public as well. With that, a motion would be in order to adjourn if someone wants to make that. So moved from, remember Hockney. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a wonderful afternoon, everyone. And thanks again.
Hi. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.